Well, good evening and welcome to the 2020 Richland Two School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Patrick Kelly and I will serve as the moderator of tonight's forum. I currently serve as the Director of Governmental Affairs with the Palmetto State Teachers Association, and I'm a high school teacher right here in Richland Two and a former chair of the Richland Two Teacher Forum. Tonight's event is a joint effort between the League of Women Voters and the Richland Two Teacher Forum. The Teacher Forum is comprised of the past three years of Teachers of the Year from each of Richland Two schools and has a mission of providing representation of teacher opinions about the teaching profession and educational issues to impact the professional development of teachers in Richland Two. The Forum is proud to once again partner with the League of Women Voters to provide this important avenue to help our community get to know the candidates willing to serve on our school board. While the League and Teacher Forum have co-hosted numerous candidate forums in the past, this year's event is a little unique, something I think we've all grown accustomed to in 2020. Due to COVID health considerations and our mutual desire to keep all members and participants safe, the partner organizations decided jointly to host the forum online for the first time. The questions for tonight's event were compiled and selected by the members of the Teacher Forum, and the questions have not been shared with any candidate in advance. Tonight's event is a forum, not a debate, and as a result, we want to remind the candidates participating that this is a forum that provides an opportunity to share your platform, but is not an environment for questions and direct debate among candidates. Instead, each question will be posed by me as moderator and each candidate will be given an equal opportunity to respond. The Forum will include three segments. In the first segment, each candidate will receive two minutes for introductory remarks. The order of remarks was determined randomly by me prior to tonight. Each candidate will see a timer on screen and when the timer reaches zero, candidates will need to conclude their statement. If they continue beyond the time limit, I will ask them to finish, and if they proceed beyond that point, the candidate will be muted so that we can ensure that every candidate has equal time and an opportunity to have their views heard. After the introductory remarks, I will ask the candidates a series of five to six questions depending on available time. And again, the order of responses has been randomly selected by me, and each candidate will receive an equal chance to respond to the question in 90 seconds. Finally, at the conclusion of questions, we will transition to a period of allowing candidates one minute for closing remarks with an eye toward wrapping up the forum by 8:00 PM. All candidates running for the Richland Two School Board were invited to participate tonight, and the candidates that you will hear from tonight are those that accepted the invitation. Joining us tonight in alphabetical order are Lindsey Agostini, Dr. Dee Bell Williams, Dr. Monica Elkins, Deon Jacobs, LaShonda McFadden, Rhonda Meisner, Jamie Shad, and Mary Ann Wright. We will now turn to opening statements, and first up will be Mrs. Agostini. So, Ms. Agostini, you will have two minutes for your opening statements. And Ms. Agostini, when you are ready, they'll start the timer. Just make sure you're unmuted.
Thank you. It was a problem. Good evening. First, let me thank the League of Women Voters and Richland Two Forum for hosting us this evening. My name is Lindsey Agostini, and I'm an incumbent running for reelection for the Richland School District Two Board of Trustees. For the last 23 years, I have been predominantly a stay-at-home mom, community servant, and professional volunteer. After graduating from the Kelly School of Business at Indiana University, I spent 10 years in sales and management in the pharmaceutical industry and temporary health. I have lived and traveled across the country and in fact met my husband Jim while working for Kelly Temporary Services in Honolulu, and he was stationed at Schofield Barracks. When Jim left the military and it was time to start a family, it was important to both of us that one of us be a stay-at-home parent. We are the proud parents of three Richland Two graduates. Thomas is a second-year medical student at MUSC. Tori graduated this spring from Pomona College. And Caroline, a June graduate from the district, has deferred her freshman year at Occidental College due to a virtual learning-only option as she has dyslexia and ADHD. She will matriculate to Oxy in the fall of 2021. As a stay-at-home mom, I have been actively involved in the Columbia community. I have sat on several PTOs, school education foundations, Student Improvement Council, a member of the 2014 Richland Two Teacher of the Year Selection Committee, and have chaired numerous education-based fundraisers to include the 2005 Junior League of Columbia's Holiday Market and Dent Middle School's 20th Anniversary Celebration. I am running again as I have tremendous passion for the district and gratitude for the opportunities provided to my children. I want all students to have the opportunity to reach their full potential. As a board member, we need to be accessible to our constituents, advocate for our students, families, and employees, and be accountable, providing a safe environment for students and teachers, asking thoughtful and tough questions, and making certain your tax dollars are spent responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Next up will be Dr. Dee Bell Williams. I see our timer is reset, so Dr. Bell Williams, when you are ready, you have two minutes for your introductory remarks.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Dee Bell Williams. First, I want to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters and Richland School District Two Teacher Forum for this platform. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here tonight. Again, I am Dee Bell Williams, and I am a new candidate running for school board because I have the educational experience that you can count on. I desire to be a voice for teachers as I am an 18-year veteran educator. I have been in education for 18 years, serving as a K-12 certified classroom educator, as well as I am currently now a college professor at Benedict College here in Columbia, South Carolina, where I assist with helping other educators get into the field in the Department of Education on the college campus. I'm super excited about running because, again, I believe that it's important for our educators to have a voice. With that being said, I've spent the last six years not only as a college professor, but as a global educational consultant, where I have traveled extensively across the United States as well as various countries throughout our globe, training educators in culture and diversity as well as classroom management. I've recently been named here in Columbia as a top 20 under 40 in the state of South Carolina as a leader. I've also recently received an award by the African-American History and Genealogy International Book Award Conference just this month for my book, Culture-Focused Teaching, which, again, helps educators to build a classroom culture that works like clockwork. I am excited, again, to run because I bring a value of culture, I bring a value of experience, and I do bring the voice of educators to the board. I am a three-time graduate of South Carolina State University, so again, my efforts would not only be one that works cooperatively with the current board members, but one that will work very, very hard to ensure that we have the educators that we need within our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bell Williams. Next up will be Dr. Monica Elkins. I see our timer's reset, so Dr. Elkins, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am so excited to be here once again for my third time. I am Dr. Monica Elkins, and I am a native of Columbia, South Carolina. I recently retired in January of 2020 as an educator after working in the schools for 32 years, serving in various capacities. I served as a teacher assistant, teacher, assistant principal, and principal. Currently, I serve as a college adjunct professor and an educational consultant with a national professional development trainer for teachers and school leaders. I am super proud of the work that I have done and continue to do in the district. When re-elected, I will continue to focus on being a voice for the voiceless and an advocate for the following, just to name a few. I would love to have student and teacher safety during our COVID-19, which is something new to all of us, an increase in teacher salaries, smaller classroom sizes, decreased student discipline, equity in all of our programs in all of our schools such as STEAM, STEM, CATE, want to incorporate welding, auto mechanic, cosmetology, barbering, just to name a few, in every one of our schools. I also want to intentionally make sure that we seek recruitment for mental health counselors, full-time nurses, and SROs in every one of our schools. Nevertheless, I have truly enjoyed serving as your representative of Richland School District Two for eight years, and I still have so much work to do for our teachers, future leaders, parents, and the community. So I want to continue to serve. I am a graduate of an HBCU, South Carolina State University, where I received my bachelor's degree and my doctorate. I have a passion for teaching and learning, and students are my utmost importance and teachers as well. I'm a teacher at heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. Next up, Mr. Deon Jacobs. So if you want to make sure you're unmuted, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to first thank the League of Women Voters and the Richland District Two Teachers Candidate Forum for inviting the candidates and myself out tonight to discuss our aspirations for running for school board. To begin with, I'm a native of Columbia, South Carolina. I'm a graduate of AC Flora High School in Richland District One, a two-time graduate of the University of South Carolina where I earned my Bachelor of Science in Finance with a minor in general education. Also have a master's degree in higher education student affairs. My experience working in education starts 12 years ago where I worked with the TRIO programs, not just as a mentor but also a counselor for their residential on-campus programs during the summer and during the academic year. I was also a tutor in the math-related subjects of Algebra I and Algebra II as well. I've also worked at the University of South Carolina in the grad school in different offices, from working with the Sophomore Initiative and even being a peer leader in assistance in the University 101 program. My background starts off when I began work at Midland Tech as an academic advisor. I've worked in financial aid at Virginia College, and I currently work at the University of South Carolina as an Assistant Director in the Versar's Office, and I also teach University 101. The reason why I'm running for school board is to be an advocate for the unrepresented school student populations, such as students who are IEPs. Also want to bridge the gap between the community and also the district as well, and also fight for better resources for the teachers across the board. The other reason I'm running, if some of you may see it or may not, is my nephew. Sorry if you can't see that very well. He's a first grader at Killian Elementary. I'm running for him, his friends, their cousins, staff members, and other partners with the district to make sure I ensure a brighter future for each and every last one of them. Thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Next up, as we transition our timer back, there we go. Next up will be Ms. LaShonda McFadden. Ms. McFadden, I see you're unmuted. When you're ready, go ahead.
Good evening, Richland Two family. I'm LaShonda McFadden, and I'm running for Richland County School District Two Board of Trustees. I'm running to collaborate and cooperate, collaborating with board members to make sure that we are producing a document and a framework that shows the outline of how Richland School District Two should be governed. I also want to communicate and collaborate with community leaders, with parents, with students, to get feedback on what they suggest and what they would like to see in their school district. I'm a political scientist, and I'm employed at Prisma Health as a referral specialist. I'm married with four children. I have a son, Justice. He attends Spring Valley and plays lacrosse and ROTC. I have a daughter, our only girl, Liberty. She is an honors student and in the Magnet Program of Law at EL Wright, and she's a cheerleader. I have a sixth grader who was formerly in the eighth program at Lonnie B. Nelson and is now navigating the waters of e-learning, getting into middle school, and he plays in the band. And I also have a fifth grader. He is also in the eighth program. He's a Duke tip and active in the alert program. And so I have children from kindergarten, from elementary all the way up through high school. I've also been appointed to the Board of Directors for the Communities Relations Council by Richland County Council. I served as the Chair for the Annual Business Luncheon, which is our greatest fundraiser, and also as secretary. I've also been as the School Improvement Council, vice-chair and chair for Spring Valley High School and Lonnie B. Nelson. I bring cooperation and collaboration, and I can reach different resources for our community. I just want to say thank you guys for the opportunity to come in here and speak with you tonight so that you guys can get to know me as I am running for Richland County School District Two.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Our next candidate up for opening statements will be Ms. Rhonda Meisner. So Ms. Meisner, when you're ready.
Good evening, Richland County voters. I want to thank you so much for taking time out of your day to look at this. I know we have a little bit of everybody, teachers, community members, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear a little bit about us. My name is Rhonda Meisner. I'm currently married. I have four highly gifted boys in the district, and that's actually one of the reasons that I got involved with the school board from the beginning. I majored in economics and political science from Emory University. I've attended some law school. And I consider myself a lifelong learner. I have a pilot's license, broker-in-charge license with real estate, and I currently represent startups. So the board is actually a policy creating entity, and I think that I have the business background. I'm not a teacher, but I am a lifelong learner, and I think that I have a great background to be an effective board member. One of the biggest things that I've heard throughout campaigning is that teachers and students need to be put first in the district, and I believe that that is absolutely the case. In fact, I built my platform around those things. My platform is students number one, teachers number two, fiscal responsibility number 302 million. As most of you know, our budget is about 301 million plus, and it's very important that we make sure that those funds from a policy standpoint get to the teachers and to the students. I've talked to many teachers that are disappointed that they have not received their raise this year while other people in the district have received their raise. I want to make sure those funds get to the right folks, which are the students and the teachers. And I thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, and I look forward to meeting many of you in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. And if candidates, if you will, when you're not speaking, remember to mute so we don't get that Zoom echo effect that we've all grown to love in this year. Next up will be Mr. Jamie Shad. Mr. Shad, I see our timer's ready, so when you're ready, your two minutes begins.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters as well as the Richland District Two Teacher Forum. So this is an opportunity for us to have a conversation, to talk about where we have been and where we are going. I am proud to say that I am finishing up my first term as a Richland Two Board Trustee. I ran four short years ago, and I ran on the platform of safety, instruction, and student behavior. I was honored by the Richland Two voters to join my colleagues on the board, and I believe that we've made a lot of progress in that time. So just to let you know who I am for those who don't know me, I'm a Colombian native. I graduated from Oakley High School in Richland District One, went on to Wentworth University, received a political science degree. I met my wife, who's an educator, Dr. Tammy Shad, and we have four beautiful girls. We moved to District Two 15 years ago in part because of the wonderful school district and schools that we have. The girls have done extremely well, but four years ago, I wanted to offer myself to serve the 28,000 students that we have. My fellow board members honored me in June of this year. I ran unopposed as the board chair, and I believe that's because I've satisfied a lot of leadership roles and continue to do so. You want someone that's going to advocate for you, just as you saw me at the State House, standing arm-in-arm with you in order to address the, what we call the Reform Bill in terms of education, but also looking for better working conditions for our teachers as well as increased pay. We'll talk about that a little bit later, as what we have done as a board, what we do to try to support you under the constraints that we have with the budgeting situation. So I look forward to continuing to have this conversation. And again, I'm James "Jamie" Shad, number eight on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Good, good advance scouting of the ballot. And last but certainly not least for our opening statements is Ms. Mary Ann Wright. Ms. Wright, if you will unmute, you are ready to go when you're ready to go.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Wright, and I'm running for an at-large seat on the Richland Two School Board. I am a native South Carolinian. I grew up in the Low Country. I received a Bachelor of Science degree in biology from the University of South Carolina and a Master's degree in education from the Citadel, and became a science teacher and taught for 29 years before returning, retiring, and returning to South Carolina in 2010. As a teacher, I was honored with several awards and acknowledgements, but none so dear as District Teacher of the Year. My entire adult life, I've spent my time in endeavors and activities that seek to improve the lives of others, from volunteering and serving in my church to sponsoring extracurricular activities for my students, to volunteering on many community-based, community-service-based organizations. Now, as a board member, I will focus on improving student achievement, implementing the most rigorous and robust curriculum and the highest educational standards and recruitment and retention of the most qualified faculty and staff. I see Richland Two as a district that allocates its resources so that every child receives an equitable and appropriate education. As we approach Phase Two and eventually Phase Three, where students and school personnel can safely return to in-person school, I will advocate for implementing creative and innovative ways to keep students in school and to ensure a safe and diverse student population. I see Richland Two as a district that not only educates the minds and socializes our students, but one that is also concerned about their emotional and mental health. And I will advocate for the implementing of programs that address those particular issues. I'm a parent and an educator, and I think that gives me a unique perspective. I have experience that provides a certain relatability to two of the major players in educating our children, parents and the school community. So let's work together to promote excellence in education in Richland Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. And that concludes our opening statements. I think the candidates figured out that my random order was just alphabetical order. That's what happens when you let a teacher moderate a debate. We got to line people up alphabetically. So now that all candidates have offered introductory remarks, we will turn to our questions. Again, these questions were compiled and selected by members of the Richland Two Teacher Forum. Each candidate will receive 90 seconds to respond to the question, and time will again be kept using the on-screen timer. So our first question, and I will repeat the question for every candidate before their 90 seconds because if you go eighth, you may have forgotten the exact wording of the question. So first up will be Mr. Jacobs, and our first question is, what qualities of a leader do you embody that will help you in serving as an effective school board member? So first question to Mr. Jacobs.
I'm sorry. May you repeat that question one more time?
Absolutely. What qualities of a leader do you embody that will help you in serving as an effective school board member?
Thank you. So one of the qualities I have is effective communication. I'm willing to talk, discuss anything through email, in person, or whichever, with appropriate wording to provide transparency for any questions or concerns that anybody has. Currently, I work in my current job as an Assistant Director in the Versar's Office. I do talk with different stakeholders, whether it be students, parents, or even staff members, to answer any questions or concerns in regards to billing or even the software that provides billing for the students. The other part is I have a great, unique, how do I put it, high integrity about myself, in part which I'm very honest. If I've done something wrong, I'll admit to it. If it's something that I don't know the answer about, or I'm just, you know, I don't have a full understanding, I will ask questions. I prefer sometimes, I want to be a book of knowledge, but we're all human beings. So I do believe that I'm one of the few people that I can actually remember that have like a lot of integrity but also honesty about myself. The other attribute is teamwork. In working in education, you have to understand that you've always worked on a team, whether it be with other educators but also students as well, even the stakeholders in the community. You have to uplift and upbring every student, but also work on yourself and also your staff members to provide effective teaching capabilities for the students and also those outside of the classroom as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Next up in our order of responding will be Dr. Elkins. And again, I'll repeat the question. What qualities of a leader do you embody that will help you in serving as an effective school board member? Dr. Elkins, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Thank you so much. I love that question. I think I've demonstrated that through my 32 years of working within the schools. I was affectionately known as the school mom. I will go back to what I teach, student-teachers, and that is the five Rs of being an effective leader. The first one will be respect. You have to respect everyone. There are no big eyes and little you. The second will be responsibility. It is the responsibility of everyone to make sure that our student leaders are learning to their capability and their learning styles. The third one would be resources. It is our responsibility as school board members to make sure that we incorporate all of the resources that each and every student needs. If they come without a pencil or paper, it is our responsibility to provide that for their learning ability. The next one would be to resolution. If there is a problem that's going on in the community without students, without faculty and staff, it is our responsibility to make sure that each and every problem is resolved, that everyone has a voice at the table because every voice matters. And mostly, can you hear me? Okay, you can say that. And the last one would be relationships. People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. So it's so important to build those relationships, maintain positive relationships, and let those relationships grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. Next up will be Ms. McFadden. Ms. McFadden, the question again is, what qualities of a leader do you embody that will help you in serving as an effective school board member?
The qualities that I embody to help me to be an effective school board meeting are flexibility, transparency, and advocacy. I am actually a community advocate. That's how I started whenever I went into the workforce, and that was teaching on behalf of students, teaching behavioral expectations, going into the classrooms and speaking in Richland County School District One and Two, and speaking to the students about the expectations of parents, and then communicating with parents about the expectations of students, and then also being a liaison between the students, the teachers, and the parents. I'm flexible because I understand what parents are going through right now with e-learning. Because I used to be a homeschool teacher. I homeschooled my kids for four years before I entered into the workforce in 2015. I also volunteer in school, and I make sure that my kids understand what's going on in the world and in society. So I'm flexible as far as being able to go to work every day now, understand what parents who are actually at home working with their kids are going through, and those who actually have to go to work. I'm flexible in that I can speak on behalf of each of them. I'm a multitasker. I can make sure that I'm taking care of what needs to be taken care of in my home and on the board meetings that I go to and all the different activities that I do with my kids. All of my kids are active in many different things. And I'm an advocate, as I said before. So being an advocate, multitasking, and being flexible helps me to communicate and collaborate and cooperate with those that I'm in relationships with in the district.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Ms. Meisner. Ms. Meisner, the question again is, what qualities of a leader do you embody that will help you in serving as an effective school board member?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. First of all, I think that to be an effective school board member, you have to have the fortitude to go against the current sometime. If you look at the last couple of years, the votes have been 6-1, 6-2, and, you know, sometimes you have to lead, follow, or get out of the way. And I'm really good at looking at things, and if it's something that I can add to, I don't back down and I don't sway away. And if it's something that I can't contribute to, I'll, you know, capitulate. But it's very important in a board situation that you look at the information and assess it and then make a decision. And I think that I'm very good at doing all of those things. I'm also a very good out-of-the-box thinker. So for example, one of the things that I came up with as far as for the students that don't have Wi-Fi and don't get there and need food is using the buses that are Wi-Fi equipped to not only deliver the Wi-Fi but also to take the food there so that we can check on the students. That's certainly started being done in the last couple of weeks, but I think that that's something to do. Another thing that I like to do is I like to have an after-action report. We all want to prevent the next pandemic in our Monday morning quarterbacking, so an after-action report is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meisner. Next up is Mr. Shad. So Mr. Shad, again, the question, what qualities of a leader do you embody that will help you in serving as an effective school board member? That will help you in serving as an effective school board member? And Mr. Shad, I think we're ready for you to go.
Thank you so much for this question. So, um, I guess I need to draw back initially on my service, uh, on several boards in the past. I've risen up the ranks, so to speak, in a lot of youth-serving organizations. And what it's taught me is that you have to work together. Might not always agree. There may be different personalities in the room, but at the end of the day. You have to make sure that you keep the main thing, the main thing. And in this vein, that would be our children. And so, um, what I was told when I came on the board the last, uh, four years ago was that I have a calming influence with regard to. Sometimes contentious, um, conversations that we may have as a board. So I believe honesty is there, listening skills. As an attorney, it's trained me to see both sides of an issue. And I bring that to the board as well. Um, the level of respect, stability, being an advocate as well. Having those relationships with our partners to try to make sure that we, we create a nurturing environment for all. Especially our students and of course our teachers. So I think those are some of the qualities that you need to be effective. And when you're talking about being effective, yes, absolutely, there may be times where you are in the minority. But board policy says that you are supposed to respect the will of the board and you're supposed to go out and, and promote that as well. Even if you own the majority, you still must respect the views of the minority. Uh, that's what I've lived my entire life and I believe I will continue to do that if honored to serve another four-year term. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up on this question is Dr. Bell Williams. Dr. Bell Williams, again, the question is what qualities of a leader do you embody that will help you in serving as an effective school board member?
Thank you, Patrick. That's an amazing question. As a candidate with a doctorate degree in educational leadership. I think it is important that we do, uh, talk about not only the qualities of an effective leader, but building leadership culture. And I will share with you what I share with my teachers when I train them as well as my students. I believe in class act leadership and the ACT is an acronym. And it stands for accountable, cooperative, and transformative. Everything that we do as a leader, of course, we need to be accountable in our actions. We need to be accountable to those we've been called or elected to serve. And we need to be accountable, um, to the thing that we say that we're going to do when we are elected. We also need to be cooperative. It is important to work together with current board members as well as with our community members, teachers. Uh, students, parents, and the greater body of Richland two community. And anything that you do as a leader, it's important that you build people. So that's why a transformative, uh, trait is definitely imperative for a leader. And you not only are building people, as you're building people, you're then building the organization. And that's how you create a culture. And what I've observed over my past eleven years of living in the Richland School District two community. Is that our board needs a culture of leadership. And so the qualities that, that I would add again are accountable, cooperation, and transformative.
Thank you, Dr. Bell Williams. Uh, next up on this question, Ms. Wright. The question again is what qualities of a leader do you embody that you will, um, that will help you in serving as an effective school board member?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I believe that I exhibit, uh, honesty and integrity. Uh, I believe that truth needs no defense. And so we should always be honest and hold ourselves in a position that we are beyond reproach, so that our word is our bond. I also believe it's important for us to treat each other kindly. Uh, without regard to, um, sexual preference, race, ethnicity, um, treat everyone fairly. I think that's very, very important. Accountability, not only to yourself for the things that you say you're going to do or the things that you do do. But also you need to be accountable to the community of which you are serving as a member of the board. I also think as a member of the board, you're a role model. And you should always carry yourself so that you can be an example to the students. Uh, and the other young people, the community as a whole and our community on how you should live your life. I also believe that a work ethic is very, very important. Um, you need to do your due diligence. As a board member, you need to come prepared. You need to do your homework. Um, do whatever it is you need to do to thoroughly, uh, educate yourself on a particular issue. I, and I also believe that it's very, very important to work as a team member. I belong to several community service-based organizations. So I know what it's like to work on committees and work with each other to come up with a consensus and hold to that consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. And wrapping up our, uh, segment on this question is Mrs. Agostini. Mrs. Agostini, the question again is what qualities of a leader do you embody that will help you in serving as an effective school board member?
Thank you. I think the, the most important thing is having a genuine and authentic interest. In our schools and in the district. And I have proven that time and time again. Um, as I've mentioned in the introduction, through my involvement with the, uh, Student Education Foundations. Student Improvement Council, PTOs, but having a true interest in really being involved. Not only with our students, but also with teachers and administrators. Um, going on with that, um, I have a business background. I think it's very important in being a leader and when we're dealing with budget issues. Um, to have the business background. Uh, this year is going to be, we have no idea where we stand. Actually, we'll be getting a, a board briefing next, uh, week. On our budget, but being aware of the monies and the funds and how they're coming in. And being mindful of budget is very important. Uh, being accessible, accessible to the families, accessible to our students, being open, uh, to the questions. And also to the teachers so that people can communicate with us and we can lead them in the right direction for resources. I've been a huge advocate, uh, for our students to get the schools back open for those that want to go to school. And also offer the virtual, uh, experience for those that want to stay at home. Uh, finally, being accountable. We must be accountable for every action as a board member. I'm willing to take that on. And finally, leadership skills. Don't be afraid to stand alone. Often, there's been a six-to-one vote and I've been the one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. That completes our, our first question. Um, and actually, your answer helps us transition very well to our second one. So thanks for the segue. Um, the second question, and Dr. Elkins, you'll be up first on this one. The second question is while reopening schools during a pandemic. What is one issue you believe the Board of Trustees should address? And please explain why and how the board should, um, address that issue. Um, so again, while reopening schools during a pandemic, what is one issue you believe the Board of Trustees should address? And please explain why and how the board should address this issue.
Mr. Kelly, thank you so much for that question. First of all, let me just say, I want to say kudos to the Dr. Davis Superintendent and his cabinet. To all of our teachers who have been working countless hours to make sure that our teachers. And our students receive innovative lessons, lesson plans. Preparing themselves to make sure that they welcome kids back into the school. And just the virtual learning, just the greatness that they've done and demonstrated with our students. While their virtual learning calming students down who are not pleased by not being in the school. As well as meeting with those parents who are afraid, they're first-year teachers to their kids and have never taught before. Go in that extra mouth. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to our teachers, to our faculty and staff. To our custodian staff preparing to get schools ready for reopening. The only concern that I would have is to just make sure that we have our PPE. Ready to go and to greet the students as they come, to make sure that we're role models. That when students come in and they're not wearing their mask. Instead of discipling those students, that we're teaching them the proper way to come in and to do what they need to do. Making sure that the classroom, classrooms are sanitized. Making sure that we have that open communication with our community, keeping them updated on what's going on with COVID in the school. Updating our parents. And I think most definitely showing compassion because this is something new to all of us. And as far as I'm concerned, we have done the best that we know how with something new. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. Uh, Ms. McFadden, you will be up next. And again, our question is while reopening schools during a pandemic. What is one issue that you believe the Board of Trustees should address and explain why and how the board should address that issue?
Um, one of the issues that I think that the board should address is the new gap that we have in academic achievement. Um, I have had questions from, uh, different sources that ask. What are we going to do about the students who have not been able to attend e-learning? Or those who are having difficulty getting Wi-Fi and, or completing the assignments? And there's a lot of times where students are just not able to submit their work or they're just not doing it. And what are we going to do about that gap in their academic performance and their, their education that they have missed during that time? I think it is something that we should definitely address and look at, but not in such a rigorous way to where we're forcing, um. A grade and a data and a, and a timeline on students. But just seeing and analyzing where each student is and actually being able to, um, focus on that. Some kids have thrived during e-learning. Some kids have struggled. Some kids have performed better in some classes than others. And we need to take a look at each individual student as best that we can with the resources that we have. And try to see where each child is progressing at. See where each child is getting better at or where they're struggling at, then assess that. Take the time to focus it. And this is what would be a good time. We have, uh, where we're hiring more people to come in or we're discussing that. That we look at the people that we start to hire and the role that they need to play.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Uh, Ms., Ms. Meisner, you are up next. Again, the question is while reopening schools during a pandemic. What is one issue that you believe the Board of Trustees should address? And please explain why and how the board should address that issue.
So I think the one reason that the board should address is safety. And I actually think that this should have begun over the summer, um, with education. The school is by definition the place of education. And, um, students as well as their parents, families, and the teachers need to know. How airborne pathogens are transmitted. Some of that is over, you know, the, the television, but for me example, as an example. Um, I don't get the local channels. So I think that we need to have an online module to explain to that. Um, that audience that's, I mean, those students and teachers and parents that are going to be. Uh, communicating how those, uh, diseases are transmitted. We need to, to provide monitoring. We need to provide, uh, personal protection equipment. We need to have temperature checks in the morning and in the noon. We also need an emergency plan in case there is, um, an outbreak at a school. We need cleaning of the classrooms. The teachers have told me they don't want to clean the classrooms or take that responsibility. Um, sick students cannot learn and sick teachers cannot teach. We also need to provide a mechanism by which those with, that are, um. Um, you know, if they have autoimmune disease, the teachers have told me that they don't want to go to the classroom. We need to provide what the ADA will allow for, um, sick time or remote learning for those students. So safety is the number one.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Shad, you are up next. The question is while reopening schools during a pandemic, what is one issue you believe the Board of Trustees should address? And please explain why and how the board should address that issue.
So rather than calling it an issue, I'd look, I'd rather characterize it as an opportunity. And I would say the biggest opportunity as a board or as board members. Would be that we have to have effective communication with the public. Whether that's with the teachers, with parents, who obviously, you know, may have some angst about the reopening, uh, with, with our students. And so we need to make sure that the public is aware of what the board can do and what the board cannot do. Um, as many of you all know, we only have one employee in the district and that is the superintendent. And the superintendent and his administration came with the decision with regard to phase one, phase two, phase three. Based on the task force that Mr. Kelly served on. And so the decisions were made and as a board, we gathered this information and we communicated to the community because we are members of the community. One thing we have to let the public know though, and constantly remind them sometimes. Is that there's so much that we can do and we don't want to give the, the impression that we are, um. You know, little superintendents or that we are part of the administration. That is not our role. The, the administration makes those decisions just like if we had a hurricane. They would make the decision to close down schools. They would, of course, be transparent with us. And then, of course, we have to then communicate that to them. So even though we may receive emails or phone calls, our job, our duty is to then forward it to the superintendent. And they will take care of that. And then we may follow up, but we have to make sure that we give the impression, that we not give the wrong impression that we are doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Dr. Bell Williams, we will go next to you with the question while reopening schools during a pandemic. What is one issue you believe the Board of Trustees should address and explain why and how the board should address this issue?
So as the culture and diversity consultant that's a candidate here, I cannot, uh, overlook the fact that besides. Uh, of course, dealing with COVID nineteen, our children are coming back from, uh, six to seven months of being out of school. But with that, they've also been enamored with, uh, many things happening in our nation, including, uh, civil unrest, social injustices. So besides the physical aspects of dealing with COVID nineteen, there's also the mental aspect that we have to as educators. Um, be prepared for. And as board members, I think it's important to do, uh, quite a few things. So. If the question deals with like, how should it be addressed or what should be addressed? So I'm dealing with the mental health aspect. I'm dealing with the fact that we should have clear policies in place when there are issues regarding racism or racial, racial issues. Within the classroom or those things that happen at, uh, particular events. Um, there also should be strategic communication from the board. To the community as it relates to what that looks like. And then, of course, making sure that we are fiscally responsible to ensure that we're including mental health professionals. Within all of our schools, not only for our students, but also for our teachers. Because we'll all be coming into this and coming into the building for the first time in about seven months. After so much has happened in our nation. So besides, of course, the physical nature of what we should be aware of with COVID nineteen. We have to address the mental concerns that will be coming into our classroom as well. Especially since we serve a diverse population of students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Wright will go next to you. And the question is while reopening schools during a pandemic, what is one issue you believe the Board of Trustees should address? And please explain why and how the board should address this issue.
Well, I believe the issue is that of safety. Uh, as we are approaching, uh, phase two. Uh, where there will be some limited, um, student, um, in school, in-person school. Uh, I believe it's important for the district to monitor, um, the, uh, students as they come in, temperature checks. Um, whatever it takes to, um, keep, uh, each of us safe. Uh, and that data should definitely be something that, uh, the CDC or DHA is involved in. As far as making sure that we catch this thing before it gets out of control. Uh, we know that there've been some spiking, uh, when kids have returned to school in other districts. And that is a concern of mine. Uh, and I want to see that the, the district, school board included, uh, would be on top of that data. And really watching it carefully so that we don't put any more, uh, of our students, our personnel. Uh, at risk of, uh, becoming infected, uh, with COVID. There's also the mental aspect of that as well. Uh, there is a national study. That let, that said, um, that suicide was the second leading cause of death among ten to nineteen-year-olds. So on any given day, our students are dealing with lots of emotional and, um, mental health issues. And I think it's important for us to address those issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, next up, and this is Agostini. The question is while reopening schools during a pandemic, what is one issue you believe the Board of Trustees should address? And please explain why and how you believe the board should address that issue.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kelly. I think the, uh, most, not the most important, but, um, a very important issue for us to, um. Discuss and address and explain and have conversations with is the fact that this is choice. That families actually have the choice to continue with the e-learning, their virtual school at home. Or come back face to face. I do, um, in having conversations with many in the confu- in community. There are a lot of questions about what it's going to look like, how it's going to be, you know, how their children will, will learn. Um, I think it's very important that families not feel the pressure one way or the other. That coming or coming to school or staying at home is a good choice. One thing also that I'd like to emphasize for those students that are coming to school. Um, if you decide to go to school, it's my understanding from Dr. Davis that if families. You know, for some reason are changing their mind, they can come out of school relatively easily. For those that have chosen the e-learning option, the families need to be aware that mid-marking period. They'll have the opportunity again to change their decision should they decide to want to go back to school. But I think it's real important that we talk about the choices that our families have once we are entering phase two. Um, a lot of the issues that we've talked about with, uh, um, safety protocol also extraordinarily important. But a lot of these are administrative issues that, um, the community has been briefed upon. that um, the community has been briefed upon. And I'm very comfortable and confident with what the school districts put in place for our children to be safe once they return. Thank you.
Thank you. And wrapping up our question for this segment is going to be Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs, question is, while reopening schools during a pandemic, what is one issue you believe the Board of Trustees should address? And please explain why and how you believe the Board should address this issue.
So the one issue I'd say the Board should address is more likely was explained earlier, the e-learning achievement gap. I will say, in this day and age, there are a lot of students who don't have access to some type of internet. So, and I've researched previous month ago, there's actual schools in North Carolina that have partnerships with AT&amp;T for e-learning resources, whether they provide like hotspots and so forth for the family. I know the district provided that with assistance. But I feel as though we should live, remove that burden from the district and its leadership and put it on the board. The voice for the board is, you said, this is a uh, aspiration of leadership, but it's a high-standing leadership position that has a lot of ears on it. So if we were to reach out to uh, AT&amp;T, Sprint, Verizon, or so forth to provide those resources for the student, that students that decide to still continue to e-learn, I think we should address that and also resolve that issue. The other part is using other areas. If you want your student to go back to school, but you're unsafe of them going to school and, you know, just like my sister, she's a single parent. Let's try to see if we can use other areas like the district building in Sand Hills and provide some teaching assistance so those students can still get their instructional method. Um, the other part is being flexible with the material for homework. Sometimes, you know, we all get caught up on internet work, but let's try to see if we can do something else like some flexible writing and some side, some sort of, hey, let me give you a worksheet, kind of like back then when we were all younger. So those are the things I kind of suggest.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. And that concludes our second segment with question two. Uh, we'll now transition to question three. Um, Ms. McFadden, you will be up first on this question. Um, and this question deals with an issue that's critically important to the teacher forum and to educators and to families across Richland Two. Um, and it's South Carolina's teaching shortage crisis. Uh, in 2018, 19, over 6,600 teachers left our schools and we had over 550 vacant teaching positions statewide to start the school year. Um, and Richland Two is not immune to those pressures. So if elected to the school board, how do you plan to advocate for teachers on the local and state level? And what are you doing or have you done to demonstrate that commitment to advocating for teachers? So Ms. McFadden, first to you.
Okay. So for for starters, um, the main, the main thing with um, recruiting and retaining teachers is the quality of life. And they want to make sure that the place that they're coming into has um, a vigorous life, something that they can do after school as well as enhance their educational um, attitude when teaching their students. Um, so being able to make sure that they are compensated well, and that's a difficult thing, especially when most of their income comes from taxpayers who are already in poverty. So we have to come up with ways and think of ways that we can compensate them um, for their quality of life that they seek to live rightly so. Um, I'm all for um, increasing teacher pay. We have to find an avenue to do it. Um, we need to make sure that we are offering discounts and and incentives. And I know that the uh, that the Housing Authority and Richland County, they're able to give um, certain um, I guess, discounts to low-income families. Not necessarily low-income families for teachers, but have an offset of one for teachers specifically for them to create an incentive package for housing, for uh, meals, for discount at museums. And actually, taking on some of the the um, issues for um, for the discretionary grant. Homeowners' associations are able to go into the, to Richland County and ask for grants. And they can team with with schools to have fun and functioning activities that you can invite your students to, that you can invite the teachers to. So collaborating with Richland County and making sure that we're, that we're offering programs and incentives for the teachers to recruit and retain them.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. We'll turn next to Ms. Meisner. Uh, the question will come to you. Uh, given our teacher shortage crisis in South Carolina, if elected to the school board, how do you plan to advocate for teachers on the local and state level? And what are you doing or have you done to demonstrate your commitment to advocating for teachers?
So thank you for that question. I've actually got a lot of feedback from the teachers over the last few weeks while campaigning. One of the things that I want to acknowledge first off is teaching is a calling. And sometimes the teachers are leaving not because of the money, but because of their uh, perceived um, um, slights within the district. In fact, I had a teacher tell me that that he would go back to teaching if if the environment was more conducive to um, um, safety and security in the the teaching. With regard to income, I don't believe that any teacher should have a second job other than teaching. Um, this may be a legislative function, but I found out that teachers cannot even tutor after school for private students so that they're not driving to another job. And frankly, I've met many teachers out at restaurants that are working their second job. So we really need to find out, find a way to increase that income for the teachers that that need that money. And um, also, I've also found, like McDaniel's Auto Group has discounts that are not even advocated or known about within the district for used cars and things like that. As a a board member, I would uh, try to create a platform so that we let all the teachers know where the discounts are, how they can get them, and talk to the community about providing benefits outside of the legislative uh, arm to to the teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Meisner. Next up will be Mr. Shad. Uh, Mr. Shad, the question again is, given our state's current teaching shortage crisis, if elect, reelected to the school board, how do you plan to advocate for teachers on the local and state level? And what are you doing or have you done to demonstrate your commitment to advocating for teachers?
Thank you. So what I've done most recently, and I'll remind the the teachers, um, when we had the rally at the State House, um, I was there with them assisting in advocating to really address the so-called Education Reform Bill that was thankfully did not pass and now will have to be refiled. Um, I've also advocated, because I, it is about relationships, and you need to leverage those relationships when you have it with certain legislators, legislators, specifically the Richland County delegation. Um, I have great relationships with a number of them, also with your county council, who actually sets the budget for this district. Uh, advocating uh, for to get those necessary funds so that we can create the environment for our teachers. It's not always about pay. Pay is absolutely important. But from what I've heard from a number of teachers is your working conditions. And the working conditions for the state is horrible. But we will try to do our level best to advocate for you so that we can make sure that those conditions are good. We have too many teachers, especially by their third year, that are leaving the profession. And a lot of it is because they are not getting the support that they need. So I'm proud of the mentoring program that we have with our National Board certified teachers that that carry them along the way and surround them. And we need to do that as a board to support the district in doing that. And so I'll continue to advocate for them in terms of money, policy, and making sure that their conditions are better and conducive to a great quality of life as well as teaching and learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Uh, next up, the next question or next response will come from Dr. Bell Williams. Dr. Bell Williams, the question again is, knowing our state's current teacher shortage crisis, if elected to the board, how do you plan to advocate for teachers on the local and state level? And what are you doing or have you already done to demonstrate your commitment to advocating for teachers?
Absolutely. Um, as a college professor where I am training educators, um, I'll start there with the work that I do day in and day out, where I am helping to prepare young educators to go into the field. I am also an author of a book, Culture-Focused Teaching, which actually talks about the teacher retention issue. I actually term, uh, have a term in the book called the Educational Fugitive Crisis because teachers have literally just abandoned the field. And that data where it was the first three years is actually quite outdated. Now, the data shows that within the first year, teachers are leaving the field. And we need to, of course, as a school board, um, need to look at what we're doing as a unified body. Um, you know, the support that we're giving educators. Educators don't go into the field to make a million dollars. But they do uh, go into the field to be treated like individuals that have gone and worked hard for their degree and they should be paid for. I also stood stood out there on May 1st, um, of 2019, um, during the rally to advocate for higher teacher pay. I also have um, amazing relationships across government. That's town council, city council, uh, State House and our senate. Uh, so I plan to leverage those relationships as a board member to ensure, to continue to advocate for higher teacher pay. Again, I stand as an educational consultant where my focus is primarily ensuring that educators remain in the classroom. So those are all the things that I have done and will continue to do as a board member.
Thank you, Dr. Bell Williams. Uh, next we'll turn to Ms. Wright. Ms. Wright, the question is, given our state's teacher shortage crisis, if elected to the school board, how do you plan to advocate for teachers on the local and state level? And what are you doing or have you already done to demonstrate your commitment to teacher advocacy?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I I think we need to uh, show support for our novice teachers, our new teachers. And one of the ways we can do that is by conducting a new teacher orientation before the school year begins and throughout the school year. So that way, we are uh, sure to communicate what our expectations are and also to show support to uh, the new or novice teachers. I also think it's important to create a mentoring uh, program where a uh, a more seasoned teacher is teamed up with a novice or new teacher. And that creates a win-win situation, in my opinion, because the new teacher can learn from the uh, seasoned teacher as as well as um, having the opposite happen. Uh, I also think it's important to create pathways for leadership opportunities that acknowledge accomplished teachers as teacher coaches or instructional leaders. And I think that will provide um, the rewards of having experienced teachers assist their peers while gaining professional development, learning leadership skills, and firsthand experience in administration. So I think by rewarding our teachers and showing them that we appreciate what they do and giving them opportunities to expand their horizons is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Uh, Ms. Agostini, you're up next. Uh, given our teacher shortage crisis, if elected to the board, how do you plan to advocate for teachers on the local and state level? And what are you doing or have already done in the area of advocacy for teachers?
Well, I think the most important thing uh, when we are advocating for teachers is actually taking the time to listen to the teachers and having a conversation with them about what is important to them, what are their issues, what are their concerns. When we're talking about teacher raises, we need to work collaboratively with the teachers um, and lobby the General Assembly, um, get together an agenda and work together so that we can um, approach the General Assembly and um, get some things done. Teachers need to have a seat at the table. They need to know that they've been heard. Um, I think that my endorsement from the South Carolina Education Association for this election um, proves the fact that as a previous school board member, I'm there to commit and meet with them. I talk to members of the Richland County Education Association frequently. And additionally, I have great relationships with leaders of SC for Ed. Uh, my phone is always available. My door is always open to listen. Uh, but I think one of the most important things we need to remember, and I've heard frequently as a a member of the board, when a teacher addresses the board or district leadership with an issue, frequently when it's just one teacher, I've heard the response too many times that it's just one teacher. And somehow, I think it lessens um, the effect. But for me, one day, one teacher posted something on Facebook and 15 months later, we had 10,000 people leaving school to go to the State House. So we need to give credibility to their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next up, Mr. Jones. Given our state's current teacher shortage crisis, if elected to the board, how do you plan to advocate for teachers on a local and state level? And what are you doing or have done in the past to show your commitment to advocating for teachers?
Thank you. Sorry about this.
Jacobs, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
That's fine, that's fine. So I have three points to this because I am an educator. I understand when I decided to go into this field, I wasn't going to be Mr. Monopoly with money bags and driving a Camaro, the top-down everything. It is a very respected field to go into. But you have to understand, being a board member, um, you have to fight for those resources. One of the things I will suggest is fighting for better classroom allocation for the teachers to provide for their classrooms. I can honestly say it's very embarrassing in 2020 that schools still send out a list to say, hey, this is what we need from your student to provide for this classroom. If we can pull in the community's help from different businesses, we can provide those resources for the classroom to help those teachers out so they don't have to feel, how can I put it, financially drained from having to provide for their classroom. Other part is meeting, just like I explained earlier, meeting with county council and city council as well to address the needs and concerns of the educators in the district. Let's see what we can do collaboratively as a team to help provide those resources, to help retain the teachers throughout the years. And another good point that was made that I already, I've thought about for years that we do at the university, mentorship. When you bring in new teachers, let's provide them with veteran teachers, but also other resources to know where where to go to. If I have questions or if I need help, even outside of work, do we have different times where we can meet, go get dinner so I can discuss our event and so forth? I'd say bringing everybody together as one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs and Dr. Elkins. Finally to you for this question, given our teacher shortage crisis. If elected to the board, how do you plan to advocate for teachers on the local and state level? What are you doing or have you done to show your commitment to advocating for teachers?
Thank you so much um, for that question. As a 32-year veteran teacher, I've been advocating for teachers for 30-plus years. I didn't just start yesterday or I just didn't start when I decided that I wanted to become a school board member. Back 30 years ago, when I served on the RCEA and the SEA Board, I was margin back then. That was in 1989. So my marching and protesting for teachers for higher salary began 30-plus years ago. Not only that, for 30-plus years, I've built positive and sustainable relationships with city councils, Richland County Council, with our legislators. And I have been a voice with going meeting with different legislators as well as writing letters, asking, requesting, and begging that they do something different, that they listen to our teachers. I have boots on the ground and have had boots on the ground for 30-plus years. So I understand the needs of what teachers need as well as students. One thing I like to say is, if you guys recall, teachers were given a $1,000 bonus. It was my suggestion and and the support of the school board where that $1,000 bonus came through. Also, if you can recall, media specialists reached out and it was my voice, my loud voice that asked that we also fund media specialists so we can get books into the classroom. So I think what we have to do is begin to see the resources that we can provide for our teachers by seeing if we can pay off those student loans and connecting with those companies and providing those bonuses that those teachers so deserve and need.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. We'll now transition to a new question. Um, first up on this question is going to be Ms. Meisner. Uh, Ms. Meisner, Richland Two celebrates its diversity and inclusion efforts. How will you ensure that you know the needs of all partners, students, teachers, administrators, parents, and community members in Richland Two?
Well, first of all, I think that um, the biggest thing is to do um, an anonymous teacher survey. And the reason for that is because I've I've heard from a lot of the teachers over the last few weeks that um, they don't feel comfortable with their their communication methods. Also, from a diversity standpoint, uh, if I were a teacher, I would be very concerned in a district that has a mandate that they're looking for specific uh, teachers to fill specific roles. The the best person for the job is the best person for the job, regardless of their race, their religion, their background, their uh, culture. It's their expertise. And from a culture standpoint, I think we do have to listen to to everyone. However, we are a school and we are a school system. And um, you know, Oliver Wendell, Wendell Holmes, um, the great Supreme Court Justice said, "We need to look at rights as exercised in a vacuum. Your rights end where my rights begin." And understanding everybody's rights makes it very easy to to have a cohesive unit and a cohesive family. And that's what Richland Two needs to be, is a family, not a direction in in a certain um, benefit to a certain race, sex, um, anything. So um, so that's my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Meisner. Uh, next up, Mr. Shad. Richland Two celebrates diversity and inclusion. How will you, as a board member, ensure that you know the needs of all partners in Richland Two?
Well, you have to be available. And you have to make sure that you know the pulse of your community. You need to talk to different folks from all walks of life. You need to talk to different folks from all walks of life. What we do and stress is our diversity and inclusion department, which is led by Dr. Helen Grant. I applaud the district before I came on the board and actually focusing money on that. And as a board, we need to make sure that we fund that. I'm looking, if allowed to come back, I'm looking to increase their budget so that they can be even more expansive in their role in teaching cultural relevance, implicit bias, not only with, all throughout the district, but especially in the classroom, so that our teachers know that the children that come in, they may have ACEs or adverse childhood experiences, know where this child is coming from so that you can know how to address this child, which goes part and parcel to student behavior and trying to keep our kids in school. That is what equity is about. I championed the equity policy with the board. It was a unanimous vote on that, and now the district is taking that mantle and moving forward. I applaud Dr. Davis and the district with our Premier 100 initiative, where we are seeking to recruit and retain men of color to come into the classroom. That is, that would directly impact student achievement. And also, having that different voice in our schools will make sure that our teachers see things from a different perspective because we have the same lived experiences. So that's what I'm looking forward to continue to do if allowed to return. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Transitioning to Dr. Bell Williams next. Dr. Bell Williams, Richland II celebrates its diversity and inclusion efforts. If elected, how will you ensure that you know the needs of all partners across Richland II?
Absolutely. I think it's important to understand the issues of all communities. So I would, of course, advocate for the board to make sure that there's a survey that can go out as general, but it's specific enough to all communities. And also seek representation in those communities. Every community has someone that has a voice that's amplified for that community, that can speak for that specific community. However, I do believe that representation is very, very important, and representation does matter. Richland School District II serves overwhelmingly almost 70% African-American students. We have 11% population of Hispanic students. So representation is very, very important because those lived experiences inside of the classroom do matter. And I also support the Premier 100, which is an excellent initiative to, of course, we're, of course, over the next four years, looking to recruit more African-American or more minority male teachers in the classroom. As the research consultant here, the candidate here, I do understand the U.S. statistics that show us that between grades K and A, 82% of our teachers identify as white or non-black. However, majority of our students in public school are majority minority students or a representation of a minority culture. So we must look at the impact of representation as we look at the effectiveness of our diversity and inclusion department within our district.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Ms. Wright. Richland II celebrates diversity and inclusion efforts. How will you ensure that you know the needs of all partners in Richland II?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think it's important to communicate. And one of the things that I would do, we're in the age of Zoom right now, and that would be to hold regularly scheduled town hall meetings where parents can call in, Zoom in, and air their concerns. I would also make it available that my contact information to everyone in the community. I do believe that all voices need to be heard, and that's one way that I can do my part by listening to the members of the community that I serve. I would also contact the Richland County Education Association representative in each school to establish lines of communication, to get a sense of what issues are affecting them and their colleagues. And I would also be willing to meet with a Richland County Education Association representative. I think it's important, again, for all members of the community. Richland II is truly diverse, and I think the diversity is its strength. And we want to make sure that everyone feels heard and included and safe as well. So that's one of the things that I would do, would have periodic town hall meetings and make myself available to everyone in the school community and the community at large.
Thank you. Ms. Agostini, up next. Richland II celebrates its diversity and inclusion efforts. How will you ensure that you know the needs of all partners in Richland II?
Well, I think what's key here is accessibility and advocacy. And first of all, being accessible to answer the phone calls, to respond to the emails. It is not uncommon for me to be told that I am one of a few board members who actually either returns a phone call or responds to an email. Most of the time, these emails that we get, these communications, are actually an administrative issue where we can provide a resource. But there are times where we gain insight from different people in our community in terms of what their needs are. My email is lindseyagostini@outlook.com. If you want to reach out to me, my phone number is 803-530-5571. That's for accessibility. I'm going to give you an example of how I've been an advocate for some of these different communities. And it started with people wanting to go back to school. I became the point person for the special education families who inundated me with emails. They also sent them to the board, but the English language learners, kids falling behind, all of these families pressing us to get those kids or provide the opportunity for face-to-face instruction. So I was the only board member advocating for face-to-face instruction and giving our families a choice, since we're the district of choice. And so I'm happy that on November 4th, we'll be offering face-to-face instruction or virtual, whatever works best for your family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Jacobs. Question again, as Richland II celebrates its diversity and inclusion efforts, how will you ensure that you know the needs of all partners across Richland II?
Thank you. First and foremost, I'll say, I'm going to take time out of this one to say I didn't answer the rest of the last question, but my wife and I, my wife's DJs, and I helped her in the past when she DJed to provide funds for teachers. And what we've done with those funds is donate gift cards for teacher resources. So that's how we've been helping out teachers in the past. I apologize for that. With this question, I will say this, there's three points to this. One is have a town hall outside of just general meetings each, you know, twice each month. Have a town hall with the board in the community to find out, how can we address, not just I, but we can address those needs and concerns for diversity? What do you need from the district? The other part is taking the initiative. I highly support what the district's initiative to hire 100 African-American male teachers. Representation begins in the classroom, and that's something I learned in college. Had I not had an African-American, I'll say female, show me, hey, this is something I can do, I can be a professional in this field, I wouldn't have known, you know, that was possible because that's the first time I've ever had an African-American faculty member, but somebody that worked in education that I could mentor, that I can mentor from, but also learn about this field. The other part two is surveys. I pride me on this take because they do send out surveys to the community at large to find out what programs do they need or what can they address. So I feel like the district in partnership with the board, let's take surveys of the community and find out, how can we address the needs of diversity? What do you need from us to help your community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Transitioning now to Dr. Elkins. Dr. Elkins, Richland II celebrates its diversity and inclusion efforts. How will you ensure that you know the needs of all partners across Richland II?
First of all, I just want to give kudos to Dr. Davis. When he became the superintendent, the first thing that he did was met with each and every board member and wanted to know some of the concerns that we had. One of my concerns was diversity because I shared with him, working in the district many, many years ago as a teacher, I found it very concerning to me that you would only have one African-American teacher on the grade level, and students would actually matriculate through Richland School District II and would never see a teacher that looked like him. So I want to just say thank Dr. Davis for the mentoring program. But I want to start with a quote that says, "Diversity is being invited to the party. Inclusion is being asked to dance." I think what we've done is we've asked our community to dance. And by doing that, we hired Helen Grant, Dr. Helen Grant, a few years ago, and she's over the Diversity and Inclusion Program. With that, she's hosted many, many town hall meetings with many people of different backgrounds, diversity, income, zip codes. And I think with that and with the survey that we've actually sent out to the community, I think we have done a tremendous, excellent, marvelous job of being able to include everyone. We celebrate African-American Month now, and many years ago, that was not a part of our celebration. We also just recently celebrated Hispanic Month. So I think we're doing a great job with including everyone. So they're not only being invited to the party, they have been asked to dance.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. And to wrap up this question, I turn to Ms. McFadden. Ms. McFadden, again, the question is, Richland II celebrates its diversity and inclusion efforts. How will you ensure that you know the needs of all partners in Richland II?
I think it's important that parents and teachers become involved in the School Improvement Council at their individual schools. This is a location and a way for us to get to know what each school represents. Each school has their own culture, their own type of flavor, and even as far as the students who attend there and the parents who have children there. It's a good time for them to join and to offer what they have to say about their culture, about their family, and then to do a presentation and to challenge each school during the school year to present something from their school about their culture, about the parents and the teachers and the students who work and attend school there. I think that's one of the most appropriate ways, if not from the PTO, then of course the FIC, which is actually mandated by the state government for us to have at our schools and producing the school report cards. I think being able to invite parents at a time that they can come and enjoy it, be it in the morning, I know some people have theirs in the morning, some people have theirs in the afternoon, some have three times a month, some only have one, or at least one is what they're supposed to have. But I think that would be a good avenue that's already in place that we can use for people to join, students, community leaders to come out to express their businesses. If there's parents there, they run businesses, they have jobs, and they can make a presentation about what's going on in their classrooms and in their schools at board meetings by chance. That's my suggestion.
Thank you, ma'am. And this feels a lot like teaching a class of really great Richland II students because we've had rich conversation and we're pressed for time because there's never enough time in a class period. So we are, we're nearing 8 o'clock, so we're going to transition to closing statements now. And as a reminder, for closing statements, each candidate will have 60 seconds. And for the first statement, I will turn to Mr. Shad. So Mr. Shad, when we get the timer back up on the screen, 60 seconds to you for your closing statement when you are ready.
Well, thank you again. I'm James Jamie Shad, number eight on the ballot, and I wanted to just highlight that I was a former public school sub at my former alma mater, Eau Claire High School. I teach on the college level now at Milllands Technical College. I want to make sure that we continue the work that we did before four years ago. I want to highlight that I voted for the $468 million bond referendum to ensure that our schools are safer. And so that is in progress. I voted in favor of the equity policy that I mentioned before to make sure that we, that every child receives an equitable education. I'm a part of this community. I'm a business leader. I'm an attorney, and I'm an advocate for education. And so if you want someone on the board that will continue the good work that we're doing as a district as we strive for premier, even in these challenging times, you want someone that's steady at the wheel, please vote for James Jamie Shad either now or before, or on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Next up for closing statements, Dr. Bell Williams.
Good evening and thank you. I am Dee Bell Williams. And if you want progressive leadership on your school board, a person who knows where the trajectory of education is going, not where it's been, vote for me. I am an educational leader within this community. My leadership has been proven. So I ask that you think about everything that you've heard tonight. I am also, out of the 10 candidates running for Richland School District II, there are three seats available. I am one of two who were only endorsed by the South Carolina Education Association. So I ask that you take that into consideration as well as they represent your interest as educators. I am an 18-year veteran educator with your interests at heart. I have the educational experience that you can count on. I know the value of why we need educators, and I know the value of what you bring to this district. And I plan to be an advocate, not only for the work that you do, but to also for you to get increased pay. I'm number two on the ballot under school board. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bell Williams. Next, for closing statements, turn to Ms. Wright. Ms. Wright, the floor is yours. Ms. Wright, got to unmute.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm Mary Ann Wright, and I am a parent and an educator. As you know, I taught for 29 years, and I think that gives me a certain unique perspective and a relatability that you may not find with the other board members. But as I reminded you earlier, I will focus on improving student achievement and with the most rigorous and robust curriculum, the highest educational standards, and I am focused on recruiting and retaining the most qualified faculty and staff. I'm for full transparency and full disclosure pertaining to any of the issues facing Richland II schools. I will allocate resources where there is the most need, be it time, money, and/or personnel. I will work to bridge the digital divide. But again, as I said, I am a parent and an educator, and I believe that we can work together to propel Richland II into the pinnacle of premier districts. So please vote for me on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Next up for closing statements, we will go to Ms. Agostini. Ms. Agostini, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
And I apologize, the screen came up and said that I was muted by you all.
No, you're good to go.
Okay. It's been an honor and, to be honest, a bit of a challenge to sit on the Richland School District II Board of Trustees. Frequently, on challenging issues, it's either been a five to two or six to one vote, with me being the one. While teamwork is important, I cannot sacrifice my principles to go along, to get along. As a forever grateful parent, I will continue to be the voice of reason, being accessible to constituents. And again, I can be reached at lindseyagostini@outlook.com or 803-530-5571. I was the only candidate to be endorsed by both the South Carolina Education Association and Central Carolina Realtors Association. I will advocate for our students, families, and employees, and will hold all accountable, including myself. Aspirations need definable expectations. As Ruth Bader Ginsburg once said, "Speak your mind, even if your voice shakes." I will again ask for your support and vote. I'm Lindsey Agostini for Richland District II Board of Trustees. It's the last question. I'm the first person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Next up, we'll turn to Mr. Jacobs for closing statements. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Thank you. I will say thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Teacher Forum, Teacher Forum for letting us discuss tonight our candidacies and our aspirations being board members. I will say I'm number four on the ballot. But with that being said, I pride myself on making sure to bridge the community and the district together, being a voice for unrepresented student populations, and continue fighting for better teacher resources across the district. One of the things I also do pride myself on is having high integrity and also being accessible. My phone number is 803-760-6862, and also my email is D E O N four district two, the number two and the number four, at gmail dot com if you'd like to discuss or any questions or concerns. Please vote for me because together, we can continue to make this the premier district in South Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Next up for closing statements, we will turn to Dr. Elkins. Dr. Elkins, when you're ready.
Just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters, our teacher forum, and of course, our premier teacher, Patrick Kelly. Thank you so much. I will end on one of my favorite quotes, and it says, "Give a man a fish, he will eat for a day. Teach him how to fish, he will eat for a lifetime." With that, I want to say thank you to our awesome, wonderful, and bright teachers for what you've done during this pandemic to make sure that our students are still learning during this season of the unknown. You have given countless hours of your time. You have provided innovative lessons, and I want to say thank you. I am asking for your vote, not based on promises that you may have heard tonight, but on the... Can you hear me? I stopped. Mine stopped. Can you hear me, Patrick?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm not asking for your vote based... I'm not asking for your vote based on promises that you've heard tonight, but I'm asking that you vote for me on my prior track record. I have given countless hours of my time. I've been the school mom, I've been a community leader. So I'm asking that you will please reelect Monica Elkins, not based on the three endorsements that I received, not based on my title, but based on the courage that you've seen me produce over the last eight years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. Next up for closing statements, Ms. McFadden. Ms. McFadden, when you're ready.
Yes, first of all, I would like to say thank you for the League of Women Voters and to the Teacher Forum for hosting this great session tonight. I want to say that I'm running for Richland County School District Two because I come from an area where there wasn't a lot of representation, the opportunities were very slim, and when I finished school, I was looking for a place where I could raise my children where there were opportunities, and this is the area. I'm so proud of what has been done in this area, and I would like to continue that. I'm not running because of a title or anything like that. I'm running because I have children in this community, and I have grandchildren that I hope to raise here as well, and they have friends, and it's a whole community, and I've sowed my roots here, and I plan on staying here and being here for a long time. I'm vested in this community, not just in Richland School District Two, but in Columbia in South Carolina. So I'm asking for your vote on November the 4th and even before then. Please vote for me, Lishonda McFadden, for Richland County School District Two, Board of Trustees.
Thank you, ma'am. And we will, for our last closing statement, turn to Ms. Meisner. Ms. Meisner, the floor is yours when you're ready.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And I'm going to give a shameless plug to my 16-year-old son, Austin, for all of his work on the website. He has so enjoyed this process, as have I. But we've lost 1,000 students, and we need to find out why they're leaving. We've got teachers that we need to keep. We need to make sure that that money that is, is being allocated to the district is spent in the best ways possible. That's why I would like for you to vote Rhonda Meisner, where my platform is. Students number one, teachers number two, fiscal responsibility number 302 million. It's an important issue, and if you can't remember, you can remember that old song, "Help me, Rhonda, help, help me, Rhonda." So I'd like for you to remember me on November the 3rd. I would prefer you vote on November the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. I, I will spare everyone from me singing, but I do remember the song. We have now reached the end of the 2020 Richland Two Teacher Forum, and as we conclude, I'd like to thank the candidates for participating in this conversation, as well as for your willingness to serve the children of our community through running for public office. I'd also like to thank the members of the League of Women Voters and the Richland Two Teacher Forum for their efforts coordinating tonight's events, especially Teacher Forum Chair A.J. Chambers and past Chair Sue Weems. And finally, I'd like to thank everyone that listened to tonight's forum. Northeast Richland County is fortunate to have one of the premier school districts in the United States, and maintaining that level of educational opportunity for our, our students requires the voters of our district to make informed and thoughtful decisions for school board positions. If you haven't already voted in the 2020 election, please remember that early voting is now open across South Carolina, including six different in-person early voting locations across Richland County. Two of those locations are right here in the northeast at Park Lane Adult Activity Center and North Springs Park. But any registered voter can go to any of the Richland County satellite voting locations and cast a ballot that will include your Richland Two school board members. Early voting is also available by mail, but the deadline to request an absentee ballot by mail is this Saturday, October 24th, so make sure to request that ballot ASAP if you want to vote in that way. And finally, voters can, of course, go to their local polling location on Tuesday, November 3rd, to vote on Election Day. All Richland Two schools and activities are closed on the 3rd, so please make every effort to participate in this year's elections so your voice is heard on the future direction of our community. Thank you again for your participation, and good night.